All right, we will call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming, everyone, and welcome. Mr. Lundberg, roll the floor, please.
Um, yes. Forty is absent.
Yep.
Uh, Clumper, Saxer?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
All right, that takes us next to the approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or alterations that need to be made? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. There are no conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests to review tonight, so that takes us to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 14th and January 28th. If there are no questions or concerns on those, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. So moved?
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. No committee input tonight, I don't believe, so that takes us to the financial items, bills and claims, Mr. Lundberg.
I'll entertain any questions on our invoice listing that we provided in your board packet. I did not have anything noted, a lot of recurring type bills that you'll see now, from now until the end of the year. There's a total of three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars of total invoices listed for your approval, forty thousand dollars, forty thousand three hundred and seventy dollars of pay vouchers, and a hundred and fifty-three thousand seven seventy-nine of food service bills. I did note one on the food service account, you'll see a payment of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty to the state of South Dakota. They had some issues with their federal reimbursement stuff, and so they overpaid us that last month, we're just paying that back.
Thank you. Any questions on the bills and claims for Mr. Lundberg this evening? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lundberg.
Okay, month of Janu- January, I should say, sorry, six million coming in in the month, just under two million dollars of receipts, and just over three million, three-point-one million dollars of disbursements, left four-point-nine million at the end of January, four-point-nine million dollars of cash, four-point-seven million of that was in the general fund, a hundred and fifty-three thousand in the capital outlay fund, fifty-two thousand in the pension fund, and fifty thousand in the air prize fund. The one-point-nine million dollars is itemized in the next two pages of your board packet. Nothing of note to, that I earmarked there. The investment report follows that, one million dollar CD at First National Bank. Payroll and benefits summary for the month of January was one-point-eight million. The breakout in the various categories is listed for you, one-point-one million dollars of benefits and associated withholdings. The actual financial statements through the month of January, on the revenue side, were fifty-eight point three percent of the fiscal year. Uh, the revenue side is a little bit lower than what I have penciled in there for almost last year, reason being for those is that, uh, our federal grants were paid in January of last year, and this year I'm getting them paid in February, so that's, that's the only difference in a percentage differences, point or two lower from last year at the same time. Expenditures, uh, nothing to note, it's right on target, uh, of what it was that last year at the same time, fifty-eight point two-four percent in the general fund and fifty-eight point three-three percent last year, so it shouldn't extrapolate into about ninety-nine and a half percent of, uh, the budget expended at the year end. Any questions that anybody had on any of the numbers? The school district is good shape financially, it's tracking just right along with our budget, how we presented it. Food service department shows a profit currently of seventy-seven thousand dollars as opposed to thirty-two thousand dollars at the same time last year, up a little bit. Hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars in the trust and agency account. That's all I have. Any questions?
Paul, just a question on, uh, food service financial statement, uh, sales to pupils, actual versus budget, would that maybe be more folks packing their own lunch, you suppose? Seven-hundred thousand versus a one-point-two budget, or?
Uh, it's, actually, it should be tracking up about that by the end of the year, I think we'll be right in the one-point-one, one-point-two million dollars of actual sales. I don't, I don't have the percentages listed there where it is, but, uh, it's tracking pretty good, uh, relative to the, the point of the fiscal year that we're in. Thank you.
Member Schrader?
The actual is just currently through this month, not actually expended throughout the entire school year, so I asked that same question a couple of weeks ago, so, um, yes.
Yep.
The actual is through January, not, once we get through May, it'll be closer to that one-point-two million.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Lundberg.
Thank you.
Hearing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. That takes us to our general business items, and under administration reports, our administrative center superintendent Larson.
Uh, thank you, Aunt Chair. Included in your packet that you have in front of you, you will have an appreciation certificate from the Associated School Boards of South Dakota. Uh, they would like to recognize you on behalf of your dedicated leadership in public education, and for working to improve achievement for all public school students. Uh, the appreciation week is scheduled for February 18th, the week of February 18th. I would note that that week, on February 19th, member Saxer and I will be attending the Associated School Boards of South Dakota Legislative Day out in Pierre, where they will be recognizing the outstanding school boards across the state of South Dakota. So, on behalf of the administration, the staff, and all of the students of the Brandon Valley School District, thank you guys so very much for your leadership, your time, your effort, and making everything we do possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you want to also do the superintendent's report?
Sure. For the record, I was expecting a thunderous round of applause.
It's okay, we know you're all frozen with us too, so it's perfectly.
Thought we covered that at the last admin council meeting. Very good. All right, with that, just a few items we want to report on. BV listens, our work environment survey has been completed, we had outstanding participation, I want to thank all of our staff for their engagement and involvement with that. I will tell you that it has closed, the links have closed, however, we have not yet analyzed those results, so that will be coming in, in the near future, we'll utilize that as we continue to create a work envi- continue to work at creating a great environment for all of our staff. Graduation requirements, the Brandon Valley graduation requirements in conjunction with the South Dakota graduation requirements, you will receive an update, presentation, and then we will take action on that at our meeting in February. Uh, the only item that I would note is we've looked at doing, requiring some additional social studies units, or I should say more specified social studies units than the state of South Dakota, that being world history and geography, um, but all of that information will be coming here at the next meeting in February. Uh, as you know, two, three-year school board seats available, April 9th is the earliest date to circulate a petition, contact the business office with any questions that you may have. Uh, teacher negotiations timeline, we have established our timeline and approach for negotiations, so you'll be seeing some of that on an upcoming executive session. I would note our personnel welfare committee has all of the dates that we will be meeting with BVA, et cetera, outlined, and those have been confirmed. Would note, we're in the process of creating our budget for next year, you will receive a preliminary budget presentation at our second meeting in May, and we would have a public hearing and potential action at our annual meeting in July, which will be slated for that third Monday of July, July 15th. Um, would just like to update you on the high school principal selection process, would note that on February 1st, I met with Brandon Valley High School Department Chairs and also a classified representative, uh, we discussed Dr. Telkot's retirement notification, desired traits of the next high school principal, and then a process moving forward. I would tell you that on December, sorry, February 6th, we had an interview with our internal candidate, Mr. Mark Schleckerway. On the 7th, there was an individual interview with that principal candidate, and on the 11th, you are receiving today, tonight, you are receiving a recommendation to hire, uh, it's presented for board approval. Would note that, um, pending that approval, the associate high school principal position will be advertised, and then we will move forward with a rec to hire from there. Also, a hot topic that we worked through a few months ago was our Fred Assam and Brandon Elementary boundary line, I want to provide you a quick update on that. All families impacted were communicated with on the 7th of January, uh, they were sent a letter and ultimately had to provide an intent to return, and our open enrollment forms, et cetera, and would I would note that all open enrollment requests involving the boundary line change have been approved, so if they met the January 1st deadline, we were able to meet that. For your information, approximately seventy-six students were impacted by that, and forty-seven will attend Brandon Elementary, twenty-nine will remain at Fred Assam Elementary. Quickly, legislative update, uh, you can keep up to date on the, the bills out in Pierre through the Associated School Boards or school administrators of South Dakota. Would note, there's an upcoming coffee on the 23rd of February at Bethany Meadows. Uh, we are excited about Brandon Day at the Legislature, which was rescheduled to February 27th. We will have approximately thirty high school students attending that event, and then again, member Saxer and I will be heading out to Legislative Day on February 19th. Supervvaluation is, the timeline is there for your review, you will be receiving a good news presentation here, uh, later this month regarding our post-secondary night and career night that we have planned in conjunction with high school parent-teacher conferences, and then a couple items to note regarding our academic calendar, no school this Friday or Monday, the 18th. We will have school in session on March 14th. March 15th is no schools, that's the comp day for, uh, parent-teacher conferences, and as excited as individuals may be to want to know about our makeup day schedule for the missed days, I need everyone to relax just a little bit longer to see if we can see what Mother Nature has in store over the course of the next few weeks before we outline our approach to additional makeup days or days for after the regularly scheduled end date. Uh, so, with that being said, I would certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
I have a quick question, um, is, so is there a deadline when you have to share when the makeup days will be?
No.
Okay.
Um, what I would, I would like to get through, hopefully we don't have an April like last year, I'd like to get through March, and then probably the second meeting in March, that'd give everyone a month and a half, you know, almost eight weeks to, to make their plans. Uh, naturally, families, if they've made their vacation plans, et cetera, for that, the Tuesday, Wednesday after Labor Day, you might miss them, um, but our staff would be expected if we do alter the calendar and bring folks back. Again, that's all depending on, um, what we have transpire over the next month or two of winter.
Anyone else? Questions for Superintendent Larson at all? Thank you very much. Mr. Lundberg, anything further? Okay, thank you. Um, high school, Dr. Telkot? Mr. Schleckerway? Mr. Thorson?
President's here.
Okay.
All right, thank you, um, just want to take a couple minutes of your time, this morning our students participated in the NAEP testing, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, we roughly had about a hundred and forty-eighth graders that participated in that test this morning. Um, the coordinators that were there, um, I wasn't able to be at all of the different sessions that we had, but the coordinators that were there were very pleased with our students and their efforts along the, um, that line, and just their, their willingness to participate in that assessment, so, um, we won't know any of the necessary results on an individual basis, we will receive those on a school basis, um, but just to know that our kids were, you know, very respectful, worked really hard in that particular assessment, their, the administrators were very complimentary. And then the second thing, uh, both of those were weather-related, because that was moved from January 30th to now, and then also our play for the middle school was supposed to be last week, it is taking place tonight at seven o'clock, so if you're available, can swing through, uh, very entertaining, we have already shown it to our fifth and sixth graders, and then as well as our middle school students, so, very entertaining, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skipstead, anything tonight? Uh, Mr. Bab, anything tonight? Okay. Ms. Foster?
No.
Mrs. Hoffcamp?
No.
Mr. Horst?
No.
Mrs. Palmer? You guys are going to get your chance, so I think in March, right? Okay. Um, Ms. Nelson, anything tonight? Mr. Henshaw?
No.
Mr. Marsel?
No.
Okay. All right, um, board, board policy, it looks like there's one discussion item on there, and that is the homework policy.
Sure, I'll speak to that for a little bit here, so, um, we are currently in the curriculum committee, we're currently working on and discussing revising the current homework We by no means feel that homework is, um, out of control or anything like that, but we just feel like it could use, the policy could be revised to reflect more 2019 best practices. Um, so we're currently discussing, um, part of the old policy that is, is an easy fix, uh, talks about the homework hotline, which doesn't exist anymore, um, so that'll be removed. And then, um, just wording it, so like I mentioned, it's, it's reflecting best practices, um, I feel like we all have a growth mindset, so we're always looking for ways to improve the district, and I think this is an area we can work to strengthen. Um, so, we would like this policy to basically include a framework for administrators and classroom teachers alike to really, like, just think about what they're assigning, how much they're assigning, just really be reflective of, of the homework piece of education. Um, so, when we, um, bring a first draft to the board, it'll, it'll include things like, um, homework as far as reinforcement, or the ability to practice concepts tied to objectives and standards, engages the students and parents, and also is time-sensitive. Um, so, that's kind of what, what you'll see once we get the first draft to the board to kind of have our first read. Um, we have a draft, but we're still discussing and working on various parts of it, so it's, it'll just continue to progress until we feel like we have something to share with you. Um, so that's kind of where we're at, I just feel like it's such a powerful thing as an educator to reflect, and I think if we can bring the homework policy back into the forefront, because it, the last time it was revised was 2004, and so, since then, I don't know how many times it's been, been read or referred to, so I feel like if we bring the homework policy back, it'll just give everyone a chance to really reflect on this piece, or this major piece that's very emotional and complex and with many variables, but if we just reflect on it and just use our professional judgment, I think it's something that we can strengthen. So, um, that's kind of where we're at on that. If there's any questions, the committee is Dr. Larson, member Saxer, myself, Kyle Bab, and Sherry Nelson, so.
I just want to thank you for taking that on, when you say 2004, if memory serves, we were fighting over half-day versus all-day kindergarten at that time, so that puts like a timeframe perspective on it for me, that's a long time, so thank you for doing that. Any other questions for Mr. Clumper or Ms. Saxer? All right, we look forward to getting that policy when you're ready to give a toast.
Yeah, and any feedback or questions, you know, I'd be happy to listen, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to general business, first item we have is presentation of the Brandon Valley School District five-year plan, 2019 to 2024.
Okay, I'll try to be as concise as I can, most of you have, uh, have been through it at one time or another, maybe, Dan, you probably haven't been through the presentation, but, uh, it's riveting, I'll tell you that. That's the only word I can think of, riveting. Uh, no, I guess what I'll start off with, the Brandon Valley School District is just in a very, very good position right now, academically, financially, uh, just, it just seems like everything is just going so well for us, uh, and in my end of it, in the financial thing, set of documents, you'll just see that through the next five years, we have a very well-thought-out plan on how we're going to accomplish all of our tasks, and I think we're in good shape to do all those tasks. As you remember, the five-year plan document is, uh, I profess, is one of the most important documents that you as a school board will look at and review and approve, and the fact that it, uh, I always say one-year decisions are easy, we can afford anything for one year, it's just how it affects somebody three, four, or five years down the road, and, and that's what this document does, it shows what, how that things affect us down the road, and that's the very tough decisions. It's broken out into four, basically four sections, the capital outlay fund, the general fund, special education fund, and then an enrollment in section that I have in there. The first section is the capital outlay fund projections. That fund is, uh, its revenue sources come all from property tax, it's solely funded by property tax, and, uh, not only do we have a growing enrollment, but we also have a growing property tax base in the Brandon Valley School District. This last year, we, 2018, 19, I think we grew just a shade over 10% in our property tax valuation, continues to go up at a, at a very nice pace, and that just allows us to fund, uh, our projects as we go. Couple of things that I'll note, you'll see on the top half of that, of that projection throughout the five years are the revenues, the bottom half are the expenditures in the, kind of in the red section there in the middle, those are probably a dozen or so, ten or twelve items that we have every year, that we just know that we have to purchase, uh, debt service, buses, computers, so I just plug those in there right, right off the get-go, and, and we just know that we're going to have those expenditures before we even start. Uh, the first one, the debt service amount, we have five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand going across there, the only debt service we have in the capital outlay fund is, uh, about a little over five million dollars for Brandon Valley Intermediate School. I would note that this fund has the ability to issue debt in, uh, in the amount of almost sixteen million dollars without even going to a vote, you would have the ability to do that if you so chose, but what we've chosen to do is, when we go out for projects that big, we have involved the public and asked for their permission, if you will, to fund those projects of, of that magnitude, and then we keep the capital outlay fund to fund a lot of our projects in-house that we do, the smaller projects, small, relatively small, I should say, but I think it's notable that you do have the ability to do that, we just have chosen not to, to do that. We have funded a lot of, uh, of these smaller projects throughout the years by paying cash and not issuing debt, and I've talked about them in the past, and I think something we should be very proud of, uh, I just listed some, just recently, the field turf and stadium and track renovations, it's probably, uh, total, the whole project has been well over two-and-a-half million dollars, I believe, when we add everything together throughout the system, throughout the time, I should say. Brandon Elementary, through the past years, we put a library music room addition on, the middle school addition, six classrooms, did that through cash, elementary and high school secure entrance projects, and in additions, office additions, the middle school office addition, a maintenance, uh, building, so on and so forth. All these projects have been funded with cash, uh, no interest costs were borne by the school district, which you can see in the, in the actual document there, that we're planning that for our next high school addition, too. In 21, 22, you can see six million dollars coming out of there, that would be to put an addition on the high school. Six and one, I guess I have it broken out between the two years, 21 and 22, and 22, 23, depending on enrollment when that hits, but that's what our main thrust is in the capital outlay fund, to plan for that project and start saving some dollars for that next big project that we'll have, which will be the high school addition. Our increases in valuation add about three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars each year to our revenue sources in the capital outlay fund, you can see that going across the top there, and that is just, the valuation of our property tax is just a key driver in this whole fund, whereas in the general fund, you'll see the key driver is the enrollment. Any questions on the capital outlay fund? The next page then is the general fund, and as I said, the key driver there is our enrollment, student enrollment, which obviously we continue to go up each year, and, uh, if you had any chance to review it in the past, we're average, in the next five years, we'll average, if it's anywhere close to projections, a hundred and thirty kids a year throughout that time period of the five years. Uh, the document itself shows on the far left, it's 18, 19, the current year, revenues and expenditures. I do want to point out, uh, twenty-seven million dollars in revenue in the first, uh, 18, 19, then we have a number of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that is the additional enrollment that we incurred beyond our, our, uh, projections. We had a big, big year in enrollment increases, a hundred and ninety-four kids, and we projected a hundred and fifteen, so it was an eighty-kid difference at about fifty, six-hundred dollars a kid, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that number gets, uh, tossed into the total revenues of twelve, twenty-seven million, five-hundred-and-forty-eight, and then that kicks forward to the 19, 20 school year of twenty-seven, five, forty-eight, so that's where we're accounting and that, accounting for that additional student enrollment growth right there, because you'll hear that a lot, that, well, we grew way over what we budgeted for, where's that money? Gets added into the revenue, and then is pushed forward to the 18, 19 school year, or 19, 20 school year. Then flipping over to the 19, 20 school year, you'll see the additional revenue items that we have, increase from additional enrollment, nine-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, that's a hundred and seventy kids, which you'll see on the bottom, at fifty-six or fifty, fifty-seven hundred dollars a kid. Then the five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand is a projected two-and-a-half percent increase in state aid. The two-hundred thousand dollars is we're utilizing, as we planned, utilizing some more flexibility in the capital outlay, increasing that number, which is a program that we've planned all along to help us out with the, uh, pension fund being rolled into the general fund. And then I do have a negative item in the revenue of other revenues, the accounting for the other revenues is, uh, taking place over the next few years. I say the accounting for it, the implementation for it is happening over the next few years. Now, we're about revenue neutral on that whole other revenue process, but it has a look to it that we may have a little bit of a deficiency either here or there in the following year, 20, 21, and then it'll bounce right back in 21, 22. So we'll be revenue neutral in the end, but it might have a situation where we got to account for some downfall in the beginning here. So that's our total revenue available for 19, 20, and our expenses are listed for you there. We're showing, uh, just for purposes of the, of the document, I always show a salary increase upper one percent above the, uh, state aid increase. You can see the state aid increase, two-and-a-half percent, two, 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 all the way across, salary three-and-a-half, three, 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 all the way across, so I, I just, that's what history has shown us, percent above the state aid increase. And then also on that chart, you can see the per-student allocation that, as it's going up two and three percent throughout that time for it. The key, uh, numbers there being the budget surplus or deficit, we always are, for the most part, we operate in a, uh, controlled deficit situation, I would say, a manageable deficit situation. We have a relatively small deficit in this document for 19, 20, seventy-five thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, and up here you'll see that I'm- And up here, you'll see that I'm budgeting for operational costs of an additional building, and I'm just kind of planning for that in these two years, for it to hit at the end of this year, so it really doesn't affect our fund balance, that $150,000 deficit. That money won't be spent there, it'll just be planned for there. And those carry forward to the following year when we implement it. So about $300,000 of operational costs, heat, lights, custodians for a new elementary school. So it goes all the way through the year five, I have a $300,000 deficit. It gets difficult out there in the fifth year of planning these, but you can see all these deficits are very, very manageable within the interim. And they will change, I mean, numbers will change in this whole thing, but we're in a very good situation financially. Our fund balance maintains all the way across the five-year timeframe, starts out in the 20% range and drops down to 15% range at the end of the five years. Very manageable. That's one of the things we've done, is manage that fund balance to a good degree, a good percentage of our general fund expenses. Any question on this? This is our main fund. This is where we spend all of our money, all the teacher salary and benefits. And there's unknowns in this, in this projection. Obviously, you got benefits, teacher salaries, new staff, and I think that's one of the line items you're approving later on in the agenda. We just have a number plugged in of $800,000 right here. I mean, that'll change as time goes on, and enrollments come in, and we know more and more as we go along. Questions? The next page is the special education fund. Pretty much the same principles as the, as the general fund, just smaller numbers, we're dealing with smaller. And the one thing in the special education fund that we're trying to do is build back up that fund balance. Pretty much depleted at the end of last year. We'll get it up to a half a million by the end of this year, we're projecting, and then get it up to $725,000. If we're in a perfect world, I'd like to see this number be a million. 20% of the expenses are close to 20%. We're not quite getting there, but a lot of things will change with that fund, too. The deficits are rather small, so that's a good sign. But our growth in special education students is growing at a pretty good clip, too, so that can all change. But we're going in the right direction. The next part of that shows our staffing need request for 19-20 next year. And as I said before, Dr. Larson has got a proposal for you to approve initially for staffing requests. There's almost 1.5 million of general fund requests total, and I think he's asking for approval of just a little over $800,000 in new staffing. It's a big number for next year, but we had a lot of kids come in here that we didn't plan on either, so it's kinda, we catch up as we go. And the same thing would happen if it were a negative number, if we planned on 150 and we had 120 come in, we would catch up as we go. We would reduce the number of staffing that we would request for the following year. So that's kinda how that all transpires. And then the special education fund, I think he's asking for approval for one teacher and two EAs. That section. The next section just lists all the staffing increases that we've had over the years, the last 25 years, I think I have listed in there. As long as I have it, I keep going with it, just keep adding on to the, at the end. It is a document that's worthwhile, because we can go back rather easily and see when this position was added, or that, as Renee said, the full-time kindergarten. I imagine you can see that somewhere in that document. I don't even know when it was, but it seems like a long time ago. But it just shows all the additions in staff as we go. And then I show some fall enrollment history numbers. And the one thing I want to point out on that document at the bottom, it's an average growth of 3.9% throughout that 20-plus-year timeframe. 3.9% average. This last year, bumping up 200, almost 200 kids, really took that average up. The next chart shows our capacities in all the buildings, which we're very pleased with their planning and how we're going with that. You can see the individual schools, where they're at today, and you can see when we get into the enrollment projections, where we'll be at, and that new elementary school is coming on right at the right time. Fred Assam and Robert Bennis are approaching capacities there, so that would tell us that we're in need of another elementary school pretty soon, and that's what's happening. The next chart shows our class sizes, and each of the, first one is the elementaries, and then we follow that up with the intermediate and middle school. I think in our staffing request, or Dr. Larson's staffing request, he's got a real emphasis on the intermediate and middle school for next year, which you will see, as you review those numbers, they're the highest numbers, obviously. And that's where he's attacking for trying to lower the class sizes and those grade Intermediate, middle school, high school, all of them are listed for you. Any questions on any of the enrollment class size information? Our high school there is, just always, that's a really cool number, I think, to have, to have an average core classes of 25 kids in a class, considering all the growth that we've been experiencing in the high school, and we're still maintaining that class size. Lastly, in that summary section of the enrollment projections, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out where we're going. It's the real key driver is the kindergarten class, and we got that going at 335 consistently throughout there. And I'm sure I'm about ready for a kaboom, not hitting that right. Comes every so often that we'll have that kaboom, but it's been pretty consistent that we should see this 335 coming in for the next four, five years. So I'm happy with that. And then the other kicker that I have circled here, currently, our senior class is 255, I have now, or 245, I guess it is, and the following year, our senior class will be 255. So we have two more years of low senior class coming out offline, and a large kindergarten class coming in. So as Jared just said, it's an automatic 100-kid increase, just by rolling out the smaller senior class. But then you can see that years three, four, and five, you start getting back up to 300-kid classes going out in the high school, so it starts breaking even. Therefore, your total enrollment starts leveling off a little bit. We're still growing, we're still gonna grow, we all know that. It just levels off a little bit as we start catching up in the high school. But this next year, the next two years, we'll have small grades going out, and hopefully a kindergarten of 335 coming in. Everybody with me there? Next slide just shows the current fall enrollment data that we submitted to the state in September of 2018. 4,251, that's our data that we go with right now. I think we're just right on the heels of Watertown, if not past them. I haven't even looked at those numbers yet, but we would be very, very close to Watertown, if not in front of them, in the total enrollment for our school district. And that's all the summary. The remaining portions of the, of the documents are all prepared by your building administrators, and they put a lot of time into that, too, and projecting their needs as they're going forward and whatnot, with program needs, and especially in the high school, I see a lot of curriculum-type needs that they're going forward with, different classes, requirements for graduation, all that stuff, that I try not to get too involved with, because I'll get real confused then. Questions on the document? Like I said, to sum it up, Brandon Valley School District is well-positioned financially moving forward in the next five years. Very pleased with where we're at.
Paul, I appreciate all the, all the work and all your staff that work on these numbers. Go back to the capital outlay. When I look at the debt service items and I look at textbook adoption, you look at 2021, 2022, the dollars spent on textbook, I guess for my benefit and the taxpayers. Sometimes we get thinking, because of the one-on-one initiatives at the high school level and the middle school level, that maybe you wouldn't think you'd be spending that kind of money on textbook, but I'm sure it's in education. So educate me on that one a little bit.
And basically, the difference in the numbers throughout the five-year period becomes, we're on a seven-year rotation, and we have some years that are, what I'll say, expensive years, and some that are not so expensive years. Like this year, I think we're in an adoption cycle of music and PE. That would be a not-expensive year coming up. But then you see it jump up in '21-'22, I'm thinking that that's language arts, and then probably '22-'23 would be math. '23-'24 might be a major, like social studies or science, something like that. And to be real honest with you, Carrie, the cost difference for textbooks has not changed. These companies figured it out, and these, most of these are all online textbooks that we're buying. But it costs the same amount to buy the online version as it does to buy the actual hard copy. They figured that out in a hurry, that, oh, these guys are all switching to computers, we gotta get this figured out, so they got that switched, and it basically costs as much to buy an online version as it does to buy a hard copy version anymore. So those, those numbers really haven't changed a whole lot, but the avenue and the approach that the teachers use is what's changing in that whole thing, so.
You could insert the word curriculum in place of textbook, because they're major curriculum adoptions, so if it's an ELA item, you're buying a lot of online resources, online curriculum, as opposed to just a textbook, but it all falls underneath the textbook company. Carrie?
Thank you. Other questions, comments? I guess that we're in good position. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lundberg. And if we, if anybody, when you're working through this, has any questions, feel free to contact you or email you if we have anything we want clarified. So thank you so much.
I'm sure, maybe relevant to note, the document is available on the business office webpage for our patrons, and in addition to that, if anyone wanted to come in and review a hard copy, they're available at the administration center as well.
Thank you. That takes us to general business items number one through three. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, item number one, approve requests for new positions for the 2019-20 school year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that Mr. Lundberg clearly outlined staffing requests and the common theme of student growth within our district. I would tell you that our general fund staffing request for next year encompasses 11 teachers at a variety of levels, some increased alternative education placements, and one assistant principal that will be tagged, and assessment coordinator as well. So you can see that we outlined three elementary teachers. I would tell you that those three teachers, we will need one, Robert Bennis Elementary, second grade, just because of the size, and we know that that's where one growth position will go currently. The other two folks are what I would classify as to be assigned. We have some sneaking suspicions on where they will, where we'll see that growth, but at this point in time, we don't like to assign that. As we saw last year, things change, variables change, and we need the ability to be flexible with those, with those staff members. I would note, two intermediate school teachers, four middle school teachers. We're seeing substantial growth at our middle school. This last year, we saw more growth at our middle school than we would have originally anticipated. And then we also have a larger sixth grade coming to us, so we're gonna see a little, we know we're gonna see additional growth there. So we have four middle school teachers. You can see two high school teachers in the area of math or science. We will be flexible in our advertising, so we're able to recruit and attract the very best candidate possible, and then we'll utilize our current staff to best meet the needs of our kids. In addition, we need one high school English teacher. And then you can see our intermediate school assistant principalship with assessment coordinator tagged on. That creates equity amongst our two, our two buildings of like size. When I say like size, I mean, the 78 building and the 56 building are running approximately the same number of kids, if you can remember correctly. Mr. Flicking was originally hired and split time between both, and then with the one-to-one initiative at the middle school to ensure that success, we transferred him there full-time to provide that support. Now we're in a situation where we're able to bring around an assistant principal at the intermediate school and support our curriculum and instruction department with an assessment coordinator, as we tag that on. You can see the teach well placements, et cetera, there. Like Mr. Lundberg said, $840,000 in general fund staffing increase. You would note that we have about a million and a half in requests, not uncommon. There is always more wants and needs than available resources. We have to prioritize our needs and do what we can to best meet the needs of our kids and have our greatest impact on student achievement. So that's how that has been formalized. Then you can see the special education staff funding request, approximately $125,000. One elementary special education teacher, and then two special education EAs, for a total of, like I said, $125,000. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have regarding the additional staffing for next year.
Dr. Larson, quick question on the middle school. Will the addition of four teachers immediately impact class sizes?
Thank you. That's a great question. I would tell you, the addition of four teachers will immediately affect class sizes in certain subject areas and content areas specifically. There are certain, there are certain subjects that it won't impact because they won't, they won't be teaching in that specific content area. These would be core teachers, as I, as I know and understand it, so that would, that would be the area that we are targeting. ELA, math, science, social studies, that type of thing.
Any other questions for Superintendent Larson on the new positions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the request for the new positions for the 2019-20 school year as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Under consent under personnel, we have items one through nine. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Building permit applications, I'm not able to get into my tab, so I'm not sure, are there any under there? If there are, nope, none, never mind. That takes us to board reports. Does anyone have a formal board report that they would like to share tonight?
I'll just speak briefly about the Student Activities Curriculum Technology Committee that we had, we had a meeting earlier this evening. Just briefly, we talked about technology and technology skills and kinda that whole realm of our, of our district as far as elementary and middle school. A lot of our meeting, we discussed and talked about the PED that was offered this past month, and I can't thank the team who brought Top 20 and Tom Cody to the district enough. Like, that guy's awesome, and Top 20 is great stuff with attitude, mindset, culture, like that message can't be heard enough. So the team that brought that to the district, thank you very much, because that's some, that's some good stuff, so.
Thank you, Mr. Comper. Does anyone else have a formal board report? Is that all tonight?
I think it's been circulated around the school district, but as far as the team at the high school that has built the video for the new biomedical career advancing class... the high school that has built the video for the new biomedical career advancing class that was phenomenal, would definitely increase the enrollment for the seniors that are interested. We're looking for some way to get some more kids involved, but definitely building an incredible platform for our CTE foundation that we're building. I just cannot thank them enough for the energy they put into that. And just, again, just very exciting to see what we're building going forward. So thank you for not only the teachers that put their time in, the students, but also the administration for your support.
Thank you very much. If there are no more reports, that looks like it takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming.